I'd just like to review the public comment policy before we get started. It is requested that individuals or representatives of groups who wish to make a statement during public comment pick up a numbered card. We're not going to do that today. We're just going to go by showing hands and ask it one person at a time. There is a mic set up for whoever would like to speak to come up if you can do that. Speakers will have five minutes to make their statements. In the event that a group of persons, supporting or opposing the same position, wishes to speak, a spokesperson will be designated to express the group's concerns. Speakers are being asked to be courteous in their language and presentation. If possible, it is requested that speakers stand and be seated when finished. It is requested but not required that the speakers begin by stating their name, address, and any organization they belong to. Speakers will direct their statements to the town board as a whole and not to individual board members or members of the audience. Discussion or debate between speakers and members of the audience will not be allowed. Bring the mic closer. Okay, I have a bit of a cold, so hopefully it still works. Town of Guilford, 223 Marble Road, Guilford, New York. Town of Guilford, public hearing notice. Notice is hereby given that the Guilford Town Board will hold a public hearing on September 25th, 2019, at 7:00 PM at the Guilford Town Hall located at 223 Marble Road for purpose of hearing public comments on a proposed renewable energy systems local law. Copies of the proposed local law are available in the town clerk's office during regular business hours as well as on the town website. This was dated September 10th, 2019. Gail M. Hothman, Guilford Town Clerk. At this time, I'd like to declare the public comment on the, or the public hearing open on the proposed renewable energy systems law. Whoever would like to speak first, please come to the mic.
Well, I will. Oh, don't worry, I'll take it down. My name is Deb Munyon, and I live in Guilford. And I'm here to tell you that this law is something that we don't want, the way it's written, okay? We know, thanks to Freedom of Information Act, that George was given communication from Calpine.
Excuse me.
Well, I can say what I want. This is public comment.
But public comment is to be respectful also, and I'm going to ask you to do so.
I haven't sworn yet. You were given communication a long time ago from Calpine that said, "We need a renewable energy law because we're going to build in your town." I'm not speaking verbatim, by the way. And it needs to have 676 feet, and it needs to have one point whatever setback, and it needs to have 50 decibels or whatever it was. So that's what you wrote. Never mind what the town wanted. We don't want 676-foot monsters in our town. And I'm going to tell you something. You are going to vote for this tonight, and that's all fine, well, and good. And then come election day, we're going to vote, and we're going to speak up, and you all are going to lose your seats. Yes? 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 They're all going to lose their seats. Because this is nonsense. This is not what the majority of the town wants. And yet, you're going to do it. Thanks for selling us out to Calpine, who, by the way, has declared bankruptcy how many times? Three or four that I know of, thanks to the Freedom of Information Act. It's a lot, you know, you can find out a lot of stuff, thanks to the Freedom of Information Act. So who is going to pay these lease owners when this company goes belly-up? And, well, not Hybridge, because it's an LLC. So they're not really going to have money. But none of this occurs to you guys. And you're selling out the town for what?
For two trucks.
For two trucks. Thank you. We will make, we will make changes come election day. This is, this is nonsense. This is not what we want. This makes me sick. It hurts my heart to think that the town that I love is going to be sold to Calpine. Sold. I'm done. Thank you.
Okay, next, please.
I'm Betty Boland. I live at 483 Hybridge Road, Mount Upton, with my husband, Tom. You might think initially what I'm saying is wide of the point, but it isn't. So it'll be quick. Definitely less than five minutes. Definitely less than five minutes. In the not far future, it's going to, it's really clear the federal government's going to confirm that there are health risks to living close to wind turbines. You know, we've seen that. We've seen that with the tobacco industry, you know, how they, for years, allowed people to die when they knew that their cigarettes could kill. EPA, it took 15 years, but they have, just this year, confirmed that drinking water is contaminated by fracking. That leads me into, we're here now with another industry that's doing the same kind of thing. They're selling their wares. And they're selling, and they're selling it to you, trying to sell it to us. And I'm so sorry that they, they did that, you know, and that you're listening to them. A specific concern I have is the approval of the 675-foot wind turbines. Bats fly in groups of 600 feet to 3,000 feet. This comes off of a study done in Texas, so Calpine should know that. So there'll be more bats than are already killed by wind turbines, now killed in our county. And our county faces the EEE, Eastern Equine Encephalitis. Above us sits four counties, oh, let's see, Oswego, Keyuga, Onondaga, and Madison. They all are high-risk for EEE. Below us, in Pennsylvania, right below us, in straight line, north to south, is a PA county, high-risk for EEE. We will become high-risk for EEE, especially if we have less bats, and that will happen. We're also, you know, high-risk for West Nile, you know? And this also kills animals, you know, this, this equine encephalitis. And this, this is an animal community. This has been brought up before. It's a different issue, but it's been brought up before. Guilford is in danger of becoming a ghost town. And that's what the reputation that these monsters are going to bring. It was said at one of the other meetings, too, about that. In July, a list of the 50 declining towns in central New York was put out. And Sydney, Green, Oxford, Deposit, others, they've had a drop from 6% to 9.8% in population from 2010 to 2018. Morrisville had a drop of 19.9%. That's more than 10% more than those other villages. And that's, one town out of 49 has that high jump. Why? And I was like, then I, Morrisville is in Madison County. So I looked it up. There's three wind farms. Two seven miles from that, from Morrisville, and one 11 miles from Morrisville. And you know, when you Google Map, it's just giving you one spot? These wind farms spread more than miles, you know? And so they could very likely be close to Morrisville. And I'm really petitioning the state to research what happened to that town. Because if it is related to wind turbines, boy, Governor Cuomo, I mean, he's hearing stuff already, but he's going to hear more, that he's putting his, everybody in danger with these subsidies, which is why Calpine is here. They're only here for that. They're going to be gone, like this lady said, they'll be gone. So I'm sure Calpine's going to fluff off anything that I have to say and, and say there's no threat to Guilford. But that's not true. And I just want to leave you with this thought. You've probably heard it before, it's famous. It's, the whole is greater than the sum of its parts. And you've got to think about that in relation to this town and to this project, not just on the collective mind of the town, but on the collective damage that's going to be done. Thank you for listening.
Okay, thank you. Next, please.
I don't have anything to say about the turbines in Sydney or around Sydney, but I was born in Sydney, and I lived there for 60 years. My mother's home, where us children were born and raised, and my mother and her four brothers were born and raised. I just want to say that probably the declining people in Sydney is because of the '06 flood, of which they're going to tear down 128, I believe, homes in Sydney, and most of these people have relocated, of which my mother's home was one of those. The oldest house in the town of Sydney. Nettie M. Plum. And I don't know how long some of these people have lived here. But I've lived here in Sydney for 60 years, and the flood brought me to Guilford. Because I am high enough up that if I get flooded, you better build an ark. So as far as Sydney's concerned, I can tell you a lot, because my mother, and I have the plaque on my wall, where the State Historical Society came and interviewed her, and she was probably smarter than them. So that's why Sydney is in the shape it's in. And industry and businesses have left because of the flood. And that's all I've got to say, and I don't want to hear anymore about Sydney, because I'll argue with you.
Okay, thank you. Next, please.
In Canyon, Texas, there is one. One wind turbine with a blade tip height of 653 feet. In Geldorf, Germany, there is again one wind turn turbine with a blade tip height of 867 feet. These are currently the largest operating land-based wind turbines in the world. In the world. They are not in residential areas. They are not 1,500 feet from anyone's home. There are not 20-plus of them. Just one in remote areas. This means that there is no, I repeat, no reliable data on the health effects of having 676-foot wind turbines 1,500 feet from a home. None. All the data that we have is based on much smaller turbines. And we have plenty of data based on those smaller turbines, data that this board dismisses. As to the negative health risks of turbines, everything from sleepless nights to vertigo, depression, heart problems, and more. It is safe to say that larger turbines will only compound these problems. We know there are environmental issues associated with the smaller turbines, which, again, this board chooses to dismiss. Issues such as avian and bat mortality, death, injury, and displacement of deer and other wildlife during and after construction, water runoff, quality of water, shadow flicker, the list goes on and on. The town's own website describes Guilford as tranquil and free from industry. This board is willing to allow our beautiful views and tranquility to be forever destroyed. This board is well aware that the majority of this town does not support the industrial wind project. Our pleas have been ignored. Our emails go unanswered. Our surveys ridiculed. The hours and hours and hours of research that we, the people of this community, have done have been tossed aside. We have been met with propaganda and lies. This is not a protective wind law. It is quite the opposite. This board was elected, voted in, no doubt, by many of the people in this room, because we believe that you would uphold the New York State Constitution and protect the health, safety, and welfare of this community. We trusted you to protect us, but you sold us out. This law will not protect us. It will make us guinea pigs. I've been very angry with this board, and I'm trying very hard not to be, because anger only breeds more anger. What I am is sad, so very sad. To think that this town board can sit here in front of their neighbors and say, "We care more about money than we do your health and safety." How can you sit there and think that this is okay?
Gary Alakas, from Creek Fred Smith Road. Been here before, right? And, boy, the issues keep coming back, and they are repetitive. But that's because we all have the same love of this area, okay? And we want it protected. It's why we voted for you guys. So that stinks that you are ignoring us, okay? It's really lousy, for a dollar. Give me a break, you know? And I got to say, with the blasting, and I'm reading up on some of the requirements and the ordinance there, and for the water, water supply protection, blasting shall be prohibited within 500 feet of any active supply well or water supply intake on a non-participating parcel. And if the blasting is required within 1,000 feet of the water supply, well testing will be required by the applicant, but with the owner's permission to enter the property. Well, these are all definitions for wells. What about springs? I am on a gravity-fed spring, okay? Located about 500 feet up the road from my house. And I have, in my spring, the best tasting water that I've ever, ever sampled, okay? Much better than you can, everybody keeps buying the spring water out of the stores. Well, mine is excellent and beautiful tasting. And around me, many of the homes have sofa water, okay? And I remember when I was looking at homes, and there were one or two that I had looked at for consideration, and as soon as I, the water, sofa water didn't want any part of it, okay? Doesn't taste so good, does it? Well, mine doesn't have that. It is pure spring water. With a cistern that's probably about five feet below the ground level, four by six by four feet deep, spring-fed by the aquifers. And this blasting is going to take place, and if it fails their water test, whatever, they ruin the, the spring, they're going to give me a well? Well, they better go down about 2,000 feet, because I don't want sofa water, okay? I mean, I'm serious about that. This, this whole project is absurd, anyway. The aesthetics that it's going to ruin. This is a beautiful area. You, God, you guys much know that. And that's why we all live here. We love this area. The nights, the beautiful nights with the darkened skies, the hills and pastures and wooded areas. And then with the hunting, they put up these turbines here, and all game disappears from those areas, where I'm a hunter, I'm a fisherman, you know? But I'm also a hiker, I'm out in the woods, walking all over. I love this area. I love being in the woods. I don't want to look at industry. I would have stayed where the hell I came from if I wanted industry. That's all I have. I'd like to get more.
Thank you. Next, please.
So you've been hearing the same, sorry, I didn't think I was that tall. So you've been hearing the same thing, but what you don't understand, that the same faces that you see here all the time, we actually represent hundreds of Guilford residents, Guilford landowners, people from out of state, people from downstate, that have reached out to us to help them in this fight. But what concerns me is that the law as written is not protective enough. Not for what we are asking of you, but also for the people that are for this. You have hundreds of people that are against this, that don't want this, but you also have the people that are for this. And as the law written, what's to say this goes through, and what's protecting them? You have not asked Calpine for anything. You've given them everything you wanted, and you haven't asked for any studies to be done for anything. You haven't, it's just a simple law, just to get this to go through. You have time. You're pushing this through too fast. You're, you know, you're, you're not writing a protective law at all. You're not protecting either side. And, you know, we are asking for a protective law for everyone, and you have hundreds of angry people, and you push this through, Calpine's protected. You're not protecting the landowners that are for this either. I'm surprised they're not up here asking for a protective law, too. Have you thought of that? Have you thought of the people that are for this? Have you thought about the town? Have you protected yourself? Have you looked at more protective laws? Leaseholders aren't protected. The town is not protected. And you have hundreds of people that aren't for this. You guys should be scared passing this law. That's all I have to say.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak at this public hearing?
You've got to be kidding me.
All right, having no one coming forward, I declare that the...
At the direction of Attorney Gary Abraham, I recently filed a FOIL request at the town. The documents I received were reviewed by the town during the development of this local wind law. These documents include correspondence from Young and Summer LLC Council at Law, representing Calpine. These papers are addressed to the town board and labeled "via hand delivery." This particular correspondence was written to comment on Guilford's draft law on May 29th, 2019. There are two things in the documents that stand out to me. First, on page two, it states, "The sensitive sites setback in Article II, Section 5, C5, as written, is based on parcel boundaries where such sensitive sites are located. We suggest revising this setback to be measured from the sensitive sites themselves." This request from Calpine is now written into Guilford's wind law. Secondly, on page six, it reads, "Calpine can agree to a 1.25x-tip height setback from non-participating parcel boundaries. However, the previously proposed 1.5x-tip height setback from non-participating parcels boundaries would be unworkable." Again, this Calpine request is the setback that is written into the current law, the draft law. I wish this town board would have considered the requests, the demands, and sometimes even the pleas from its own residents. Instead, we were ignored time and time again, while Calpine could simply ask for something, and they got it. 676-foot tip height. Even this very specific request was granted. This wind law was not written to ensure the health, safety, and well-being of our residents. It was written for Calpine. This town board has failed to do the job it was sworn to do. And it's time for a new majority to sit on this board. It's time to elect new officials that will do what you have failed to do. I encourage all residents to vote for me, Dan Harrington, as town supervisor, Rebecca Young, and Dwayne Reeve as town council. We will put the health, safety, and well-being of Guilford residents first. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would wish to speak at this public hearing? Once again, is there anyone else who would wish to speak? Is there anyone else in the public who would wish to speak at the public hearing? Having no one come forward, I declare the public hearing closed. Okay, at this time, we'll proceed with what is on the agenda for the board meeting. I'd like to call this special meeting of the Guilford Town Board to order. I'd ask Councilmember Fogarty to please lead us in the pledge.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Okay, the first item of business we have on here is a seeker. Brady has provided us with documents that have been distributed to the board, and Brady, I'm going to ask you to take us through this, please.
George, before we do that, can you read into the record the latest comments from the Shenango County Planning and Development Board? Make sure we hit that.
Yes, I don't have them here.
Okay, well, I got it.
You have the copy.
It's dated September 23rd, 2019. It says, "Dear Superintendent Senick, the Shenango County Planning Board's 239 Review Committee has committed, has completed the review of the above referenced proposal per your request. The committee has approved the application with the following recommendations or concerns." And it says, "No concerns." Please send the Shenango County Department of Planning and Development a copy of your All right, so you should have in your packet a couple, quite a few different things. So in the packet is a part, the first thing is a Part I to the long-form EAF. Yep, should say, Part I.
Right on top.
So I just want to quickly flip through that, just to make sure that all the information is accurate as we can make it. So let's just go through this quickly. I'm not going to go through line by line, but just please flip through it and make sure Part I information appears to be accurate. Some of it's filled out based on DEC's mapper program. So when you, if you put in data on the area of where the project is located, then you, it spits out answers to some of the form. Now, it's not, doesn't work well for local laws like this, where it's town-wide. We discovered that when it's a town of this size, you, it won't actually spit out an answer if you put town-wide. It says it's too, too mu, too big. So we had to break it into two, just to see if it would spit out any answers. So you'll see at the end of Part I, there's two mapping results, one for the north, for North Guilford, one for South Guilford. And that allowed us, allowed the mapper to spit out some results, so we compiled them into, into part of the Part I. So I'll point that out when we get to it. So please go through pages one and two. So I want to point you, draw your attention on page two to section C. So I want to draw your attention on page two to section C, Point One. Okay? This is the section that kind of dictates how you go through the rest of this form. And you'll see that it says, "Will administrative or legislative adoption or amendment of a plan, local law, ordinance, rule, or regulation be the only approvals which must be granted to enable the proposed action to proceed?" So in this case, the action is adoption of a local law. So, the answer there is yes. So, it tells, it says, "If yes, complete sections C, F, and G." Which means you skip D and E. So, if you look, keep going towards, through C here. On page three, some of this has been filled in. If I've missed anything here, if the mappers missed anything, please let me know. You can see in C four, it fills in, for example, the school districts, the public protection forces served by the project site, so basically anything within the town.
Brady, on C four...
Yep.
Terry, Terry, I need you to use the mic.
On C four, it says, "Which fire protection and emergency service?" It only lists Guilford, but there's also the Mount Upton Borden's Fire District, or Fire Department, too.
Is that located in the town?
It's within the town, yes.
The fire...
Should be the Borden Hose Fire Company.
No, this is for the whole, this, what we're looking at is for the whole town.
Yes, we have two entities. One is a fire district, and the other is a fire protection district. Guilford is a fire district. Mount Upton, which is part of the township, is a fire protection district, and the town contracts with the Borden Hose Fire Company for...
Okay.
Are they in the project site?
Yes, yes.
So there's not, so anything located within the town. So Gail, if you could keep the official copy here tonight, so what would you, tell me the exact, what you would call it.
It's a Borden's Hose Fire Company.
Okay, can you add that?
And Mount Upton.
Okay, so, if there's not anything else on Part C here, we'll skip down to the end of E. So I'll show you the page, I'll tell you the page number where the next one is filled So, starting on page 10, there's some answers on page 10. Even though the directions say you don't need to fill out E, there are some questions here that were automatically filled in, just because of using the mapper program. So, I've indicated in this that that's really the only reason these are filled out, is because the mapper program put them in. So you can see, it indicates that there's apparently a, somewhere in the town, a DEC environmental site remediation site. So that's what that, on the bottom of page 10, is. And then if you turn the page, there's some more bullets here that are filled in, having to do with wetlands, flood, the flood plains. It's indicating that in certain places in the town, there's a 100-year flood plain, and there's a 500-year flood plain. And page 12, apparently there is a designated significant natural community called, what is it?
Dwarf shrub bog.
A dwarf shrub bog, whatever that is.
I had a question back on...
Yeah, go ahead.
It mentions lakes or ponds, I'm sorry, lakes or ponds, and must the names be in there?
Where are you?
I'm looking at 11...
I can't hear you. You need to use your microphone.
I'm sorry. Take my time, then. Yeah, I'm looking at H, Item Four. It lists streams, and then it says lakes or ponds. Are any of them regulated? Like the Guilford Lake, I'm not sure.
Yeah, so, like I said, this is, we don't have to fill this section out. The only reason there are sections, that there are, some of this is filled out is because DEC's program that produces this automatically fills it in when you say that it's town of Guilford. So we really don't need to fill any of this out. We could have just left all of this blank, but I figured since the mapper program spit out some of the answers, we'd just leave them. But, so I'm inclined to just leave anything blank that's supposed to be left blank.
Okay, I understand.
I just want to make sure if anything was put in, that it was correct. Okay? You'll see, so if you flip through the rest of this, at the very, very, at the page 13, after page 13, you'll see the mapper results that I was talking about after page 13. There's, you'll see, we highlighted the bottom, the bottom half of Guilford in the little map, if you go past page 13. And so it shows some additional answers to some of these questions, where there wasn't enough space in the form to complete it, so. And if you keep flipping, you'll see the next section, where it shows the north part of Guilford highlighted, which produced the rest of the results. When you're comfortable with that, I'll move on to Part One F.
Going back, you've got to go backwards.
No, I'm going forward.
Part One F, is that on page 13?
If you just, if you, it should be the next stapled document. It's a narrative that was written, looks like this. Yeah, so the very, page 13 of it, it says, page 13 of Part One, it says, "Attach any additional information which may be needed to clarify your project." So, there's a narrative added there that we, you guys looked at this last meeting. This is the same thing. We just add, Mark and I added a little bit additional detail to it. Just, it's the same document, few tweaks, though, but it's a good opportunity to clarify kind of the approach we're taking with this. So, this, the action we're taking is adoption of a local law. We're not reviewing any specific project. We're not reviewing any specific, site-specific impacts related to anything that might be contained in the local law. It's a review of the local law. So we're viewing it impacts, environmental impacts through Seeker, from a conceptual standpoint, rather from a site-specific, project-specific standpoint. The local law itself, as you well know, requires a site-specific environmental view every time a project comes before the board, under the law. So, that's not what we're doing tonight. So that's kind of a summary of what some of this says here. It lists a number of different potential, general potential impacts that could occur Just, one of the new parts, one of the new parts here is on the second-to-last page of this narrative. So it starts, at the top, you'll see where it says, "Full environmental assessment form." Second-to-last page. This is what I kind of just explained. It says, "In accordance with instructions on Part One of the environmental assessment form, Sections C, F, and G are completed. As the town's adoption of the proposed local law does not result in construction and on any specific site, Sections D and E of the EAF are without..." I'm sorry, hang on. So we can't complete D and E of the EAF without extensive speculation. So, "Several items in Section E have been completed based on the information provided by the mapper. Future projects will be subject to environmental review pursuant to Seeker or the Article 10 process if the project is large enough." It's possible that some projects that come under the scope of this local law could be Type II actions. There's, it depends, there's some specialized Type II sections that have been added recently to, by the state, relating in large part to solar. So that's what we listed there, some of the potential Type II's. But in most cases, commercial development under the local law is going to require a full environmental assessment form itself, and a full Seeker review itself. So that's just the explanatory narrative that's included with Part One. Mark, do you have anything else on that? So we'll go through Part Two next. So what I want you to do is, while you look at Part Two, I also want you to, there's another document included in your packet that kind of also gives context to the Part Two section. It says at the top, "State environmental quality review," it says, "Negative declaration, notice of determination of nonsignificance." It's a, it looks like this.
Yep. That was the last item. Just go to the back of that, what was in the packet. Yeah, right here, right here.
Oh.
It's further back.
Is it back here?
Yeah, keep going.
Keep going, keep going.
Keep going.
Well, I was going back in there.
It says at the top, it says, "Name of action, adoption of local law number three." It says, "Seeker status." This is a Type I action. Everybody on the same page?
Yes.
Okay, so this tracks Part Two of the form that we're about to go through. So, just, I'm just going to read this, so that you guys can all hear it. The proposed action, this is in the description of action section of the document I just pointed out. So it says, "The proposed action involves the adoption of legislation for the entire town of Guilford to establish minimum requirements for renewable energy, wind, and solar projects. A procedure is also established for the town's review and approval of projects. Specific projects less than 25 megawatts will require an environmental review pursuant to 6 NYCRR 617, which is Seeker. Projects 25 megawatts and greater are subject to the Article 10 process administered by the New York State Public Service Commission, which also includes an environmental review. In so much as the proposed action consists solely of adoption of local legislation, there will be no construction-related environmental impacts at any specific location. Therefore, all responses in Part Two are no. At such time, a specific renewable, at such time, a specific renewable energy project is proposed, a project-specific environmental review will be performed pursuant to Seeker or Article 10 if the project is greater than 25 megawatts." Okay, so that's the context of this. So, we'll go to Part Two, and you'll see in these, in the document I was just reading from, the reasons supporting this determination track the sections of Part Two. So you'll see there's "impacts on land," tracks number one on the Part Two, which is "impacts on land." Okay, everybody with me?
Yes.
Mark, please chime in at any point, if you think of something. So, I'll read the, what we have, again, these are pre, these boxes are pre-checked, but we can change anything at any time, okay? I just did this just for simplicity's sake, okay? So I'll go through it, but then if you want to add anything or change anything, let me know, okay? So, "impact on land," says, "proposed action," which is adoption of local law, keeping in mind, "may involve construction on or physical alteration of the land surface of the proposed site." Answer box is checked, "no." The description says, "The proposed legislation establishes applicable requirements for setbacks for commercial, non-commercial wind and solar projects, so that they are appropriately cited, giving due consideration to sensitive areas and those not participating in the development. Plans are required to prevent the erosion of soil during and after construction and the pollution of surface or groundwater. Developers must show a plan for decommissioning, which includes restoration of the land, using native materials and vegetation. Construction must comply with all state and federal laws, and compliance with local road use laws will be required. Site studies are required, which will define site-specific characteristics listed under EAF Part Two, 1A through H." So that's kind of a description of the reasons supporting our answer "no" there. Does anybody have any comments on that? All right, so if not, we'll move on to Two. "Impact on geological features. Proposed action may result in the modification or destruction of or inhibit access to any unique or unusual landforms on the site." Answer there, checked is "no." The two, number two in the other document says, "The proposed legislation requires applicants for renewable energy projects to describe the geographic areas within the town that would be acceptable for wind and solar development, identify unique or significant geologic features or landforms, and perform geotechnical and vibration studies by qualified professional. The EAF environmental mapper did not identify unique or unusual landforms or any national natural landmarks within the town." Anybody have anything to add on that, or change? And as you can see here, just again, reminder, when the box is checked "no," you don't then, that means you don't have to go down and answer the sub-questions. You only answer those if it's "yes." All right, moving on to number three, "impacts on surface water." "The proposed action may affect one or more wetlands or other surface water bodies." Answer checked is "no." And then, moving to the other document, the explanation, "The proposed legislation requires applicants to prepare a storm, drainage, and grading plan to prevent excessive runoff or flooding, which may include preparation of a detailed stormwater pollution prevention plan or a SWIP. Large projects are subject to New York State Development, Department of Environmental Conservation's construction activity stormwater permitting requirements. Renewable energy projects are not to be located in identified flood hazard areas unless proper floodplain development permits are received. As there are New York State and federal wetlands identified by the environmental mapper within the town, under the local law, wetlands would need to be delineated and an erosion control plan must be prepared. Location of renewable energy projects will be consistent with all applicable state, federal wetland regulations. Individual projects proposed under the law must complete wetland delineation studies, prepare erosion control plans, and identify existing drinking water supplies. Project plans will demonstrate no increased runoff or manage runoff adequately to minimize impacts. If wastewater discharges are proposed, applicant must secure permits from the DEC and County Department of Health as appropriate." Anything on that? Any changes? All right, number four, "impact on groundwater." "The proposed action may result in new or additional use of groundwater, or may have the potential to introduce contaminants to groundwater or an aquifer." Answer checked is "no." Okay, number four. "Under the legislation, applicants must present an adequate plan for preventing pollution of groundwater. The legislation requires commercial wind development applicants to identify existing water supply wells to conduct pre and post-construction sampling of water supplies within 1,000 feet where blasting might occur. Specific requirements for blasting and water supply protection are included in the legislation. Contingency plans for alternate water supply are also required. Decommissioning requirements would require developers to remove any underground facilities that would pose an environmental hazard. Except for operations buildings, no use of water supplies or connection to water treatment or sewer services is anticipated." Sure.
Would this also apply to springs?
Yeah, that was a... Yeah, that was a good comment. So, I mean, all I would say is that my recommendation would be that this board should interpret this as broadly as possible to include springs. I mean, it also mentions water supply intake. So, I mean, you could, I think, lawfully expand that to include any source of drinking water for people. And that was the intent, certainly the intent here was to protect drinking water on people's sites, so. Gail, would you pass me a water?
Mm-hmm.
I'm going to lose my voice if I don't hear you.
No, I don't want you to do that.
Does anybody have any further comments on this one? All right, "impact on flooding: The proposed action may result in development on lands subject to flooding." Answers checked is "no." "The EAF environmental mapper did not identify designated floodways within the town. However, there are 100 and 500-year floodplains. The local law addresses renewable energy development within identified flood hazard areas. Additionally, compliance with DEC regulations and a SWIP is required for each proposed commercial project. Plans are required to prevent runoff and flooding." And I know that we've, obviously, as you well know, that we've seen flooding in this area, and one thing that we have to be keenly aware of is if projects have multiple sites, we have to look, you have to look at stormwater runoff collectively so that you don't just look at one site and say, "Yes, that site is complying with what DEC would require," but you have to look at what the cumulative effect of it would be. So we've reiterated that and put that on the record several times, both in the High Bridge case and on this record. So I think when you actually, if you ever get to the point of ever reviewing one of these, that would be something you'd have to review in this, so. Any further comments on this section? All right, "impacts on air: The proposed action may include a state-regulated air emission source." Answer checked is "no." "The proposed legislation relates to the development of wind and solar renewable energy projects. The essence of such projects is to reduce reliance on fossil fuels and associated release of greenhouse gases. Individual projects will have normal, temporary, construction-related dust and diesel emissions. Such are minimized by industry best management practices." Any comments on this section? Okay, number 7. "The proposed action may result in the loss of flora or fauna." Box checked is "no." "The proposed legislation requires that environmentally sensitive areas be identified and that evaluations be conducted to identify potential impacts to birds, bats, and other wildlife, including threatened and endangered species. The EAF environmental mapper identified significant natural communities, endangered and threatened species within the town. Under the local law, potential projects are to be located in a manner that minimizes impacts to wildlife, especially these species. During restoration, after decommissioning, restored soil areas must be revegetated with native seed mixes, excluding any invasive species. If necessary, the legislation enables the town to require that applicants prepare plans to mitigate impacts and to apply for any applicable state or federal permits." I mean, there's been, does anybody have any comments on that? Anything to add? Okay. There were comments made about, you know, impacts to, as you know, bats and eagles and avian, other avian wildlife, and the law specifically requires them to show that they're not going to have significant impacts on those in each case when they come to apply. So that's the intent of this law in that area. I don't know, do you guys want to take comments from the public right now?
No.
Okay.
We're just going to continue at this time. Anything that they released would be through DPS.
I'm sorry, say that again.
Anything that they're looking for from Calpine, those reports would be through DPS.
Yeah, absolutely. Anything that's been filed in the project that's not been deemed by the judges as confidential has been filed online, so, and/or is available in hard copy at the library or at the town Number 8 is "impact on agricultural resources." "The proposed action may impact agricultural resources." Box checked is "no." "State agricultural districts are present within the town. Wind and solar projects on agricultural lands will preclude agriculture where renewable facility infrastructure is installed, such as solar fields, roads, and support buildings. However, it is estimated that only 10% of the land in the town is used for agriculture. The legislature, the legislation addresses siting location and provides for appropriate setbacks, such as commercial solar projects must be set back a minimum of 100 feet from, 150 feet from adjacent agricultural land. Projects are generally required to comply with applicable laws and regulations, which would include adherence to New York State Department of Agriculture and Markets guidelines for wind power and solar power projects, and providing proper notices of intent to Department of Agriculture and Markets for specific projects. It is not anticipated that wind and solar development will prevent future farming on project sites. All renewable energy development must provide financial guarantee for decommissioning so that the renewable energy infrastructure can be removed, allowing the land to revert to prior use at the end of the project. Further, commercial wind and solar development could support participating farmers through landowner payments. Non-commercial solar and wind can be used by farmers to supply energy to support onsite farming operations." Any additional comment on that? I think this was mentioned elsewhere as well, but it goes a step further as well, and if they have to, any project would have to move down, I think, I believe it says 4 feet, but then also beyond that, everything would have to be removed if it poses an environmental hazard. So if there's some hazard that would prevent or otherwise contaminate, you know, agricultural land, they'd have to go even further under the law. All right, number 9. "Impacts on aesthetic resources: The land use of the proposed action are obviously different from or in sharp contrast to current land use patterns between the proposed project and a scenic or aesthetic resource." Box checked is "no." So, number 9 in the other document, "Generally, because of the dense forests and rolling topography, there would be relatively small number of viewers in high places where turbines or solar panels will be most visible. Modern construction and modern design of solar panels and wind turbines lend a sleek, clean, uniform sculptural form so as to help minimize significant aesthetic impacts. The proposed legislation requires that the developer inventory aesthetic resources of the town. Visual impacts of renewable energy projects must be evaluated by the applicant. Applicants are required to mitigate potential visual impacts to the identified sensitive receptors to the extent practicable. Interconnection lines are required to be underground, if possible, thus reducing visual impact. With respect to wind development, applicant must furnish a lighting plan, conduct a shadow flicker study, incorporate design standards, et cetera. Lighting impacts must be minimized and applicable lighting standards met. Landscaping plans will be followed to minimize visual impacts. Additionally, setbacks from defined sensitive sites and other areas are established. No height limits for structures in the town currently exist, so a maximum height limit for turbines is established by the local law. While shorter height limit is possible, the wind resource in the town is such that larger turbines are more productive and would likely lead to fewer, a fewer number of turbines in a wind farm, which would lessen overall townwide impacts, including visual. Impacts resulting from wind turbine shadow flicker are likely to be minimal due to topography, vegetative cover, and the 30-hour-per-year maximum standard included in the local law. Solar developers are subject to landscaping and buffering plans to minimize visual impacts and avoid glare to neighbors and roads." Anyone have anything to add on that? Okay, number 10. "Impact on historic and archaeological resources: The proposed action may occur in or adjacent to a historic or archaeological resource." Box checked is "no." "The EAF environmental mapper identified areas within the town which are potential archaeological and/or historic sites. However, the proposed legislation requires that applicants avoid certain sensitive areas, including setbacks that will minimize impacts to certain historic sites. The local law requires compliance with all state and federal law and regulations, which would include Section 106 of the National Historic Preservation Act and Section 1409 of the New York State Historic Preservation Act. Commercial developers would be required to submit a long-form EAF and a site slash project-specific review of impacts to historic and archaeological resources would occur. Applicants would be required to show avoiding and minimization of impacts to any historic and archaeological resources within the town." Any changes to number 10? Okay, number 11. "Impact on open space and recreation: The proposed action may result in the loss of recreational opportunities or a reduction of an open space resource as designated in any adopted municipal open space plan." Box checked is "no." Number 11. "Impacts to open space: The proposed legislation is protective of the town's open spaces. Installation of commercial wind and development energy projects on lands protected by conservation easements is prohibited. Setbacks from defined sensitive areas, including certain recreational areas, will be maintained." Anything to add to number 11? Any changes? Okay, number 12. "Impact on critical environmental areas: The proposed action may be located within or adjacent to a critical environmental area." Box checked is "no." "No critical environmental areas are identified within the town," which, by the way, that's a defined term, "critical environmental area," a CEA is a defined term, that's not just a normal term. The mapper itself didn't identify any within the town. It goes on to say, "The proposed legislation requires applicants to identify environmentally sensitive areas such as wetlands and areas supporting rare, threatened, or endangered species, and to mitigate environmental impacts on such resources." Any changes on number 12? Okay, number 13. "Impact on transportation: The proposed action may result in a change to existing transportation systems." Box checked is "no." Number 13. "Depending on the specific project, commercial wind and solar development could lead to short-term impacts on local roads and transportation during construction. Roads may need to be upgraded and/or repaired. Traffic may, I'm sorry, there's a typo there, may need to be temporarily reduced to one lane with flagging to accommodate delivery of project components. However, the proposed legislation anticipates the project sponsors will enter into comprehensive road use agreements with the town for commercial development. Such an agreement will provide for plans to minimize disruption to residents and businesses of the town during construction, preserving emergency services, and repairing any damage caused to roads. Additionally, adoption of a protective town road use local law with which compliance would be required under this local law is imminent." So if you remember, the local law specifically says they have to comply with any adopted road use local laws, which you are going to be doing. Any changes on number 13? All right, number 14. "Impacts on energy: The proposed action may cause an increase in the use of any form of energy." The box checked is "no." "The proposed legislation relates to the potential development of wind and solar electrical generating facilities. Such projects are anticipated to connect to the existing electrical transmission grid." Anything to add on that? Number 15. "Impact on noise, odor, and light: The proposed action may result in an increase in noise, odors, or outdoor lighting." Box checked is "no." "The proposed legislation requires that applicants for wind development to undertake noise and vibration studies that include, I should say, that would include low-frequency noise slash infrasound. Operational noise and infrasound levels for wind turbines and substations are established based on standards acceptable within New York State. Design and operational noise standards for commercial wind turbines in the local law are largely based on Article 10 wind projects approved within the last three years. Each of these projects were heavily vetted by multiple state agencies, stakeholders, and noise experts after consideration of the available noise impact studies around the world. The local law establishes design criteria to minimize impacts due to excessive lighting. Lighting impacts must be minimized and applicable lighting standards met. Neither wind nor solar projects are expected to generate any odors, with the exception of temporary diesel emissions during construction. The local law includes detailed blasting provisions that require applicant to use a qualified third-party blaster and to comply with applicable state and federal laws." Does anybody have anything to add to this section or changes? Okay, number 16. "Impacts on human health: The proposed action may have an impact on human health from exposure to new or existing sources of contaminants." Box checked is "no." "The proposed legislation strikes a balance between individual landowner safety and overall impacts. The proposed legislation requires that applicants for renewable energy projects evaluate noise, vibration, traffic, shadow flicker, ice slash blade throw, structural safety, security, et cetera. Additionally, the applicants must evaluate potential interruption to radio communications. A shadow flicker study must be completed for wind turbine projects to evaluate impacts to residences, schools, and businesses. Setbacks are imposed by the local law to address possible safety concerns. Setback distances are consistent and in some cases greater and thus more protective with setbacks applied in renewable energy projects in New York State. Increasing setbacks from residences or other inhabited structures would increase the spread of any project with multiple turbines or solar fields, thus increasing visual and other impacts townwide. Provisions for safety signage, fencing, and lighting are included in the law. Construction best management practices are required, and decommissioning and proper material disposal and site restoration is required at the end of the project useful life. The local law calls for avoidance or minimization of impacts to human health and post-construction monitoring and compliance protocols to ensure project conditions are enforced." Any changes or comments on 16? Number 17. "Consistency with community plans: The proposed action is not consistent with adopted land use plans." The box checked is "no." "The town does not have zoning and has minimal regulation. Excessive regulation in one particular area would be inconsistent with the past and current town planning practice. The proposed renewable energy legislation is consistent with the town of Guilford's comprehensive plan, including the update adopted in April 2019. This plan recommends adopting a renewable energy law for the town, which will establish a procedure for review and permitting by the town board. This legislation seeks to mitigate impacts of renewable energy projects."
On the second sentence, between inconsistent and the, there should be a with.
Yeah, inconsistent with the past.
Gail, you got that?
Yep.
Yep.
I've got it. Number 17.
Any further comments on 17 or any changes? Okay, number 18. "Consistency with community character: The proposed project is inconsistent with the existing community character." Box checked is "no." "The proposed legislation seeks to minimize adverse impacts on the character of the neighborhood's scenic, historic, environmental resources of the town with specific requirements dealing with each and standards for location siting. The legislation seeks a balance between improving energy sustainability, increased use of renewable energy, and encouraging economic development while preserving the public health, welfare, safety, as well as environmental quality, visual, and aesthetic values, and existing neighborhood social and ecological stability. The local law seeks to protect continued enjoyment of certain recreational areas, sensitive and historic sites." Any comments? Any comments? I'll just point out for the record that there were significant changes made to this local law throughout the whole process for the last four months based on comments received by, from the, both, from the public for and against the local law. In addition, yes, there were also changes made based on recommendations from Calpine, but there were dozens and dozens of recommendations that they wanted that we didn't make, that we rejected for a variety of reasons. So, just to let the record reflect that, there were several comments made that this local law reflects everything that Calpine wants. It probably doesn't reflect 95% of what it wanted. Don't quote me on that percentage, but... All right, so the next step, if nobody has anything else on part two, is to go to part three. So, part three is the evaluation of the magnitude and importance of the project impacts and determination of significance. Again, just a reminder, the action we are reviewing here is adoption of the local law. And you'll see that there's a narrative added there, typed in. It starts about halfway down that first page of part three. It starts with, "On the full environmental assessment form, part two." You see that where it's typed in? I'll just read that from the part three form. "On the full environmental assessment form, part two, no areas of impact were noted and no impacts were identified as, quote, 'no' or 'small' impact, unquote, or, quote, 'moderate' to 'large' impact, unquote. This is due to the nature of the action which involves the adoption of a local law. Refer to full EAF part one and the attached part one narrative for more details. The intent is to properly condition all types of solar and wind installations that may be allowed in the town where currently no specific requirements exist for such uses. If adopted, the local law would affect land throughout Guilford. Various types and scales of solar and wind systems may be permitted in the town except, there's a duplicate there, except as limited by setbacks and other design and operational standards that would effectively preclude such uses in certain areas. Solar and wind systems would be allowed and properly regulated so that the community may enjoy the benefits of such renewable energy while protecting Guilford's rural character, quality of life, public health, safety, and welfare. The adoption of local law will not directly result in land development approvals, permits, or subsequent land disturbance in development. After adoption of the local law, any subsequently proposed large- or small-scale wind or solar installations would be subject to the applications, subject to applications for permit and/or the standards imposed by the local law. Also, completion of a project-specific full EAF and environmental review under the New York Seeker regulations would be required for most commercial projects except those that may be properly designated as Seeker Type II actions. Later Seeker review of site-specific projects would address sites, a site's environmental characteristics, including but not limited to soils, wetlands, streams, floodplains, agricultural districts, and farm operations. The requirements for large-scale wind and solar facilities include submittal of information and studies about natural characteristics such as agricultural soils and possible impacts to environment and the health and safety of residents." Anything to add on that? So if you keep going down, it goes through and says the determination of significance. It indicates this is a type one, indicates that part one, two, and three were completed. If you flip to the next page, it says, there's, this is a spot where we can list additional support information. I just listed that document we just went through for part two. And I also listed that list of resources that we've been working on for a couple days, just putting together everything that you guys have given me that you've looked at or have been sent to you. I've included it in your packet, that list. It's somewhat incomplete and somewhat, there's some, I can tell there's some in there that are duplications, but I did want to include it, at least what we've got so far for tonight. But, you know, if you continue to send me what it is you've looked at before tonight's meeting, we'll update that. But for tonight, there is a list, 11-page-long list here of all the different things that you guys listed here. As additional support for adoption of this local law. So the next part of this, part three, is based on the vote, the actual vote you take on Seeker. So, there's a written Seeker resolution. It should be in your, on the next, kind of the next section in your packet. It says, at the top of it, it says, "Seeker Resolution for Local Law Number Three of 2019." George, you want me to read that, want me to read it, or do you want to?
I'll let you read it. I have a call then.
I'm on a roll right now, so.
Okay.
It says, "At a special meeting of the Town Board of Town of Guilford, held at Town Hall 223 Marble Road, Guilford, New York, on the 25th day of September 2019, the following resolution was offered and seconded." Now, I'm reading this, I'm just reading this. If you want to change anything, it's in contemplation of what you're going to do, but if we don't want to change anything, or anything changes, we'll address it. But I'm going to read it into the record so everyone knows what it says. "The following resolution was offered and seconded, whereas the Town of Guilford, the town, has introduced Local Law Number Three of 2019 entitled Renewable Energy Systems Local Law," the "local law" in quotes, "and whereas pursuant to Part 617 of the Implementing Regulations of the State Environmental Quality Review Act, Seeker, on July 10, the Town Board determined it was lead agency. Whereas pursuant to a resolution adopted on September 4, 2019, the Town Board determined the adoption of the proposed local law constituted a type-one action under Seeker. And whereas the Town Board has prepared and reviewed and considered Parts One, Two, and Three of a full environmental assessment form, an EAF, and based upon its review and after due deliberation, determined that the local law will not result in significant adverse environmental impacts. And now therefore, be it resolved, that the Town Board of the Town of Guilford hereby determines that adoption of the local law will not result in significant adverse environmental impacts and therefore issues a negative declaration pursuant to Seeker. And be it further resolved, that this resolution will take effect immediately." Any further discussion on this?
I move this resolution, that we adopt it.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Speak into the...
Second.
Any further discussion on the resolution? We're going to do a roll call.
Supervisor George Sennett?
Yay.
Councilmember Kenneth Fogarty?
Yes.
Into the mic, please.
Sorry, yes.
Councilmember Terrence Ives?
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas Ives?
Yes.
Councilmember Gilde Ward?
Yes.
Okay, the resolution carries.
Okay, so now that we've done Seeker, the next step would be, unless anyone has any further comments, would be proceeding to a vote on the local law.
Yes.
So there should be another written resolution in here. Should be in the packet, should be one of the last things, should be, if not the last thing, one of the last things. It says, "A resolution approving Local Law Number Three of 2019." Again, this is pre-prepared just for efficiency, but if you want to make any changes whatsoever, let me know. We can make the changes. Gail can make them, okay? All right, so I'll read it into the record. "At a special meeting of the Town Board of the Town of Guilford, held at Town Hall 223 Marble Road, Guilford, New York, on the 25th day of September 2019, the following resolution was offered and seconded, whereas the Town Board has considered adoption of Local Law Number Three of the year 2019 entitled Renewable Energy Systems Local Law. And whereas, the Town Board has previously held public hearings on May 29, 2019, and August 14, 2019 regarding said local law. And whereas, the Town Board scheduled a final public hearing on said local law for September 25, 2019 at 7:00 p.m. And whereas, notice of said public hearing was duly advertised in the official newspaper of the town and posted on the town clerk's signboard. And whereas, the local law referred to, was referred to the Shenango County Planning and Development Board who reviewed and approved said local law on September 23, 2019. And whereas, the aforementioned public hearing was duly held at the Town Hall 223 Marble Road, Guilford, New York, on the 25th day of September 2019 on or about 7:00 p.m. And all parties in attendance were permitted an opportunity to speak on behalf of or in opposition to said proposed local law or any part thereof. And whereas, pursuant to Part 617 of the Implementing Regulations of the State Environmental Quality Review Act, Seeker, the Town Board, as lead agency in this action pursuant to a resolution adopted on September 25, 2019, has determined that the adoption of said local law will not result in significant adverse environmental impacts, and a negative declaration has been issued for the purposes of Seeker. And whereas, the Town Board, after due deliberation, finds it is in the best interest of the town to adopt said local law. And now therefore, be it resolved, that the Town Board of the Town of Guilford hereby adopts Local Law Number Three of the Town of 2019 entitled Renewable Energy Systems Local Law. And further resolved, that the town clerk be and hereby is directed to enter said local law in the minutes of this meeting and give due notice of the adoption of said local law to the Secretary of State. And further, this resolution will take effect immediately."
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Further discussion by the board. Hearing on roll call.
Supervisor George Sennett?
Yes.
Councilmember Kenneth Fogarty?
Yes.
Councilmember Terrence Ives?
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas Ives?
Yes.
Councilmember Gilde Ward?
Yes.
Motion carries.
This can't be reversed. This is an election, November 1st. If I could marry, marry it, it was reversed. They would reverse it, so don't get old white, Calpine. This could be reversed, November 5th.
Gail, in the packet, you should have gotten the DOS forms, I think, from Kelly in my office? Yes? Well, the good news is I brought one with me.
Okay, we've got a couple other...
Sorry, just two other things. So, because this is a negative declaration on a type-one action, we have to publish notice and environmental notice bulletin, so we'll take care of that. And the only other thing I wanted to point out, I didn't specifically read this, but it was in the document we read that, where it went through 1 through 18, at the very end, it said that because this is a negative declaration on adoption of a local law, that an environmental impact statement will not be prepared. So I wanted to just point that out, and that was part of this which was included in your packet, okay?
I just want to share with the board, Brady and Mark and I met twice now in the last month. Most of the work was done by Brady and Mark, taking a look at the application that Calpine has put into the state, and we are responding to that. There are some things that I think will bring to the board's attention, areas that we may want to challenge the application as far as what is there, possibly dealing with some mitigation of runoff. We talked a little bit about beaver dams in the town. I have met with the highway superintendent in that regard to take a look at where they drain to, but there can potentially be issues with that. You know, if there's blasting or other things, or a significant rain event or something like that. Bob Davis and I met and had reviewed the visual impact study that was done by Calpine. It's my assessment, and Bob said it is pretty complete, that they have picked most of the visual site points, but once again, I'm not an expert in that. The board may want to consider the possibility of exploring, having other experts work on that. The same thing, we may have some concerns about the decommissioning plan, and we'll talk to the board more about how we may want to proceed with that. There's a lot of things in that application. It's pretty long, but I would encourage the board, if you have questions, please get them to Brady and Mark or myself, and we'll move forward with that. This is, this may begin a year-long process once our application is approved, and the town certainly has the ability to weigh in on that. There are some things within the application, you know, we've done a lot of research on property values. There's a lot of documentation that it's not going to be impacted, but what if it is? You know, we may want to challenge the company as to how they would respond to that.
Yeah, we have, we've already identified numerous areas where we'd like to make comments on behalf of the town, and so I encourage you to look at that. I'll share that with everybody before we submit them, but there's numerous areas where we'd like to make some changes. There's, for example, contrary to what many people believe, their existing application as it's submitted doesn't comply with a lot of provisions of our local law. Our local law is more protective than what they've proposed in their application, so they're going to have to change their application to comply with our local law, and we're going to point out each instance of that where we can. Okay, so, you know, we just haven't had the power to do that yet because we haven't adopted it yet. So now that it's adopted, you know, we'll be able to put this on the record, and now they're going to have to, you know, basically amend their application to comply with the local law, which they've indicated they will address it when we do adopt it. So, for example, I'll just point out with the property value issue, we've seen in the past where they will include, you know, they take the position, obviously, that they don't believe there's long-term impacts on property values, so we've put, we've taken the position that you need to prove that. Put on the record all of the reports, all of the data you have proving that, so we make them come forth with it. So that's a comment that we'll add, for example, on that issue in particular.
I'm just going to encourage the board, we need to be proactive in this regard. If there's other things, as you have an opportunity to take a look at the application, or we have things come up in board meetings, that we want to take a serious look at those, and at times discuss hiring our own experts to, you know, above and beyond, I'm not trying to diminish Mark's role, but to take a look at some other areas that we may need some expertise in.
Yeah, Mark just reminded me. So, it was odd to me that, in my experience with the Bluestone project, that Delaware Atsigo Audubon Society was heavily, is heavily involved in the Bluestone project in their quest to make sure that eagles are protected, in particular eagles are protected for that project, but they haven't participated in this project so far. And so I reached out to Andy Mason, who's been a really great advocate in the Bluestone project, and basically, he indicated that, you know, their initial review of where this project was going to be located, they did not see the same types of impacts on eagles that they saw in the Bluestone project, but they're still interested in participating. So I encouraged him, if they didn't want to, you know, participate in a formal process, to submit, you know, if they have feedback, submit them to me, and we'll, you know, I'll present it to you, and we'll submit it as part of our commentary. I mean, certainly speak up if you're an expert on eagles, but if you're not, you know, let's look to see if DOAS has anything, you know, that they want to submit, and we can put it in on their behalf, so. But I just wanted you to know, if you're wondering why they're not involved, they initially have identified that it's not as significant of an area as the areas in Sanford and Windsor.
Okay, thanks, Brady. Moving on, we have a couple other items on tonight's agenda. At our last regular board meeting, you were provided with a copy of a local road use law. We actually had two versions, and the board kind of agreed on one version. You've had an opportunity for a few weeks to review that. In addition to the Article 10 requirement that the applicant sign a road use agreement with the town, I would encourage the board, once again, to adopt a local road use law. And if you feel it's ready to take the public hearing, entertain a resolution to do that at our regular October board meeting.
So move.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion made in second, and I'll say the public hearing on the proposed road use law at 7:00 p.m. on October 9 at the Guilford Town Hall, to hear public comment on that. We should have enough time to get the legal notice in the paper, and we have copies of the law already available, and we'll get it posted on our website. Moving down, we have an item of business... Oh, excuse me. Discussion. Any further discussion? Yes, yes.
Yeah, I told Nate that that's the one you guys are going with, so...
Yes, and I emailed him that also. Any further discussion? Hearing on, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, that's going to carry. Thank you, Gail. Employee retirement resolution. Is that in our packets? This is a requirement for the New York State Retirement System, a standard workday and reporting resolution. Be it resolved, that the Guilford Town Board hereby establishes the following as a standard workday for elected and appointed officials, and will be reporting the following day's work to the New York State and local employees' retirement system based on the record of activities maintained and submitted by these officials to the town. based on the record of activities maintained and submitted by these officials to the town clerk in his body. Um, Councilmember Terrence Ives, his standard workday, he has 2.19 days per month. Accountant Janice Wright out, six hours. Once again, she works 4.9 days per month. Doc Control Officer, approximately 5.42 days per month, and a deputy clerk, 10.78 hours. I'll entertain a motion to move forward with this resolution from the board.
I make a motion.
Motion is made. Do I hear a second?
Second.
A second.
Further discussion? Hearing on all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, that's going to carry. Just an update on the encore lease. Um, I, I've spoken with, with attorney Nate Van Woi on this. It's his recommendation that we wait until the law actually goes into, um, force. We've approved it tonight. It has to be filed with the state. And at that point in time, um, we will have the, the lease agreement for the board to take a look at once again. I also do not have the updated version back that references the local law. So we'll be getting that back to you. And, and I have to check with Nate, because when I, I read the, um, requirements for enacting the local law, it says when it, it has to be, of course, submitted to the state by the town clerk or 20 days. Is, do we have to wait 20 days, or if that's submitted, we can perhaps take a look at that at our October 9th board meeting?
Yeah, I would, I would say you, if you send it in, you know, we, we can look at, we can look at, we can look at the lease on the October meeting. I mean, that would be more than enough time. We, we will have filed it by then, so I'm
Definitely.
pretty confident that we'll be okay there. I mean, I, if for some reason we won't, we haven't heard back from the state by the 9th, maybe we'll try, let me know, you know, and we'll try calling them. Usually, sometimes we'll give us a verbal.
We always send that stuff in certified return receipt requested, okay?
Right, so we would be able to vote on it, I think, October meeting?
I'm pretty sure we will. Unless, unless, for some reason, they reject our filing or something odd like that, but if all things go well, we, we should.
We're not doing a public hearing on this?
It will be subject to a permissive referendum, and that will be part of the resolution when we adopt.
So, can you tell me then if, Brady, if, if, under the circumstances, this, this would not be, uh, subject to public hearing?
It's subject to permissive referendum. It's not subject to a public hearing.
I don't, I don't believe so. I've, Nate's been looking at this the most, but he has indicated to me that there's
And Nate said he would prepare the resolutions for, for, um, the board.
Because my personal feeling is, this is, this is town residents' land. They should at least have a chance to speak, and they shouldn't have to go out and get a petition to put this on the ballot to do so. I think that they should at least have a public hearing on this.
Once again, certain things are subject to public hearing. I'll check with Nate, and I'll have him get back to you on that. But I do not believe it's subject to public hearing.
So what is the public referendum? That's a vote?
Permissive referendum.
Okay, permissive referendum.
Right, if the board is petitioned and there are requirements, the petition has to have registered voters who voted in the last election, and there's a set number. I'd have to get that to you. Um, and then it would have to be taken to a public vote. Which the public could weigh in on.
If you get enough people supporting the petition, then it goes to a public vote.
There would have to be a public vote on it. Okay, fuel bids. Um, last month, when we took a look at the fuel bids, um, there, there was a need for some clarification. We have that for you, and it was on the propane bid. Gail, do you want to take them through that?
Okay, so on the suburban propane bid, we put it in the fixed column. What it really was, was the Vestal Rack daily price plus 40 cents. So it was a variable, not a fixed price. When I called to clarify that with them, they did also give me a fixed price, which was $1.29. So I gave this to Bob. He looked it over. He believes that we should stick with Merabido at the $1.16 fixed price for propane. And everything else would stay the same.
I'll entertain a motion to that effect.
I move that we adopt this or take this fixed price.
For Merabido, for the amount?
For $1.16.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
Further discussion by the board? All in favor then?
Aye.
Okay, that's going to carry. Okay, I have a couple other items that are not on the agenda, um, that, that kind of, um, came in. I, I spoke with Janice. One of the things that I have concern is, is a bookkeeping to try to be as transparent as possible. Janice suggested, because we've had additional attorney fees related specifically to the development of this law and ongoing to the High Bridge project, is that we create another attorney line by resolution in our budget. And it would be contractual, but it would be 4.1. And that way, the public can see, and the board's going to know, and we're going to have to go back and do some, some bookkeeping to, to show that accurately. Does that make sense to the board? What we were doing, we were trying to put the things under supervisor contractual, and Janice said that's probably not a good idea, because there's other things that come out of my line. And once again, to separate this out and create as clear a picture as possible. So i- if a board member so chooses to move that, I'd entertain a motion to create a second attorney contractual line as 4.1.
So move.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Hearing on all in favor?
Aye.
And we're going to have to go back, and I'll work with Janice to clarify the bookkeeping. It may take a month or so to, to break those bills out, and it will show that way. We're also going to have to do some budget amendments, because we, we did a budget amendment moving some funds into my line, and we'll have to move them now from my line to that new line we're creating. Um, a little update on Spectrum. I, I sent an email out to you with, with the proposal, um, with the 5%. We don't have to take any action on that tonight, but if the board so chooses, I can get back to the attorney who's working on that with a percentage. Once again, that's, that agreement's going to have to go to, um, public hearing. The, the 5% rate, they said would increase as it passed through the local, um, Spectrum, um, what can I say, customers, and that would be about $4.50 to $5 a month.
Would that be with free cable?
No.
No? I thought that was supposed to be part of it.
Okay, you're going to have to hear what's gone on since then. It is part of our agreement. There's now been a court case that is out there discussing free services that the cable companies have provided to towns, and it's not going to really be free anymore. They will have the ability to have that deducted from any franchise fee.
In other words, what you're saying is those that are paying for the cable, franchise fee, just the ones that have it are the ones that are going to be paying for it, not the rest of the community.
Right, right.
And that doesn't seem fair, because I don't want Spectrum.
I have Spectrum, and I don't want to have to pay the extra 5%.
Well, I think the 5% is excessive, and, and what the attorney advised, he said Spectrum's going to tell their customers that if you have questions, you go back to the Town Board. The reality is, as they have expanded into town, it, it's cost myself a fair amount of time, and Highway Superintendent Bob Fleming a fair amount of time, dealing with, as they were putting new poles up and running cable. And Tom knows the fact that we've had issues with their cable. It, it's cost, it, it, I think so. It's cost the, the town some money, and for years, we've had no franchise fee. I'd make the suggestion that we do 2.5%, if they will do a half percent, and it'll be about $2.25 a month. But it is an increase to those customers. If you're okay with that, we don't need to take any action. I'll let the attorney know that that's what we'd like to have written into the agreement. The agreement does currently provide for free cable. I don't know how that's going to come out in the wash with the recent court decision.
Tammy was supposed to get back to me, and she hasn't.
Okay.
But, but when I talked to her last week, she said that it was up to legal right now. Everything else was done. So I was supposed to hear back from her. I haven't. So I'm going to contact her.
Okay, and, and we're going to look for the agreement, and I'll, I'll check with, um, the attorney, Keegan Coughlin, who's handling that for us at, um, Coughlin and Gerhardt. Gail, we only got that, was it yesterday?
Yesterday.
The, the court decision came in, so that's a, a quick update on that. Just for an FYI, the, the draft budget is in. I've submitted it to the town clerk. She's supposed to have it by the 30th. I'll let you take a look at that. If you have questions, let me know. We'll discuss it at the October board meeting, unless you want to have another special meeting on the budget. We are in under the cap. And I, I think it's a fairly good budget, but once again, if you have questions, get back to me. Okay, that's it for tonight. Brady, do you have anything else for us?
Nope, I'm all set.
Does any board member have anything else for us?
I move we adjourn.
Okay, motion has been made to adjourn, and second it. All in favor? Opposed, that's going to carry. Thank you.